Almighty God, thank you that it is true from Genesis 1:1, that in the beginning you created the heavens and the earth, and that from Psalm 24:1, that the earth is yours and all that is in it, the world and all who live in it. Thank you for how practical and personal that is, as it includes this gathering in this building. We thank you for all who are here dedicated to service. We lived up our Staples Railroad days this week, that we could have safety. And we just thank you that as we are talking local here in your presence, that at the center of history continues to stand the meaning of your cross. So we ask for wisdom in all that is discussed and decided this evening. Thank you again for you above all, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting on this beautiful summer evening. We will go ahead and move on to our next item, which we need to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. We will move on to item number four, which is to approve the consent calendar, minutes of our July 22 meeting and the payment bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Doug. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. bringing this item number five, instead of second meeting and adoption ordinance 558, amending chapter 20 through 22, section 3 of the city code.
Again, this is a second reading. A copy of the ordinance is in your packet, along with a map identifying the areas within the city of Staples where that would be allowed. So also add some very reasonable rules. Recommend approval.
I move the adoption of ordinance 558, amending chapters 20 to 22, section 3 of the city code.
Second. Motion by Mary, second by Mary Joak. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. bringing this item number six, consider approval of resolution 1996, calling for public hearing on proposed assessments for non-payment delinquent utility bills.
Copy, the resolution's in your packet, proposing September 9th at 7:00 p.m. For that, notice will be provided to anybody who's on that.
I'll make a motion for the approval of resolution 1996.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Blake. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Moves us to item number seven, which is to discuss proposed ordinance 559, amending chapter 16, article 7, licenses, permits, miscellaneous regulations.
So this, I just wanted to bring it to the council, have discussion, and if the council supports this, we'll have a first reading at our next meeting. But this, this has to do with our mobile food unit ordinance. And, you know, back, you know, we had a lot of discussion of planning on zoning, and then also at the council, mobile food unit licensing and where they can operate at. And basically, the current ordinance says not on the public street unless it is at one of our city parks, you know, NP Veterans Park, Wilson Park, Odden Park, you know, that type of thing, or a private auction. And as I recall, the discussion related to private auctions had to do with, like, you're having an estate sale, you know, in a residential area, that type of thing, where it's a kind of a one-time deal. And I think a lot of you may be aware that there's a weekly auction that takes place in the old Snap Fitness Building downtown, and there's a food truck on the street. We've had some complaints about that food truck being parked on the street, but we don't really have a definition of what a private auction is. And so if, if we don't want that weekly private auction with the food truck parked on the street downtown, we need to add a definition that would exclude that type of operation. So I want to bring it to the council. You know, like I say, the, you know, the original conversation related to the private auctions, I think was geared towards, you know, you're having an estate sale at a house. It's a one-time shop. There's not room in the yard to park a mobile food, type of thing. Now, Doug, if you have a different recollection than that.
I think that sounds about right.
Well, and I've had, like, I've told you all, I had a lot of people, I was in Rochester, and I had three people call on that particular day. First of all, they were concerned because of the location of it, because you come around that corner, and there it is, right there. So you can't really say, well, you can't have it, but somebody else can on the street somewhere else. That's not so dangerous. But, you know, I don't think they should be on the road either in town like that.
So, and just a suggestion, would that be something maybe we should, would that be a change of the ordinance? Or if there would be any, or is that?
It would be a modification of the ordinance, but, you know, we, we took that to P&amp;Z early on, but it's not a zoning thing necessarily, so.
Right, yeah.
But it, you know, the question is, do we want to allow that or not?
I don't think so.
And, and, you know, like I say, my recollection of all of the discussion related to private auctions was not that.
Right.
But without having a definition in there, there's like, you know, we're a private business, and we're having an auction.
So the way it's stated in here now, you know, your example in there, would that correct the situation?
Right, it, it, again, and again, this is only related to the mobile food unit regulation. So, you know, ba- basically, but define a private auction as an auction held at a residential, commercial, or agricultural property at the request of the seller, and is what, and is which need, and which is neither the permanent place of business for the auctioneer or auction sales. Private auction may not be held at the same property more than once per calendar year.
Right.
So, and I, and I, I would agree with the assessment about the safety of people turning off Highway 10 onto Forest Street at that location, because they've, you know, they've had a street-side window open on top of just having it feel like right there.
Yeah.
You have no visibility of it until you turn.
Yeah. I mean, people sent me pictures, and I forwarded them on. So, I mean, there, it was, it was a traffic jam there that day.
So, because they're in the old Snap Fitness Building, right? So there is a piece of private property behind there that probably would be, isn't it? That is an alley? That building doesn't sit right on the alley.
It's, it's. Yeah, I'm not, not positive. Let me just take a look.
Isn't that Seasons that has that bigger spot where they park?
There, it's all along there, actually. I think it's, if I remember right, it's all along there, I think. That building, I don't think goes all the way to the alley.
There, there is a little strip on the back, you know, where something could park on the alley without technically being in the alley. The other option would be to talk to Seasons and see if they could put it on their, on that vacant lot, or First International Bank.
Oh, that's where Colleen bought now. So they'd have to talk to Colleen.
Well, Seasons and Colleen both own pieces.
Right. Or the bank, just for the people.
Yeah, there's options. I think they could look for different options.
Yeah. So if there's generally agreement that that was not the intent of the, of the mobile food unit ordinance, we'll go ahead and put it on the agenda for our next meeting for a first reading.
So there's a consensus.
Thank you.
Move on to item number eight. Consider setting a date for the 2026 budget workshop. And then August 28th is suggested as an option.
It's the season.
What, what time?
Pretty much open to anything. We typically have kind of done over lunch, you know, two-hour timeframe.
Works for me.
I couldn't at night, but if it's during the day.
Twelve to two, eleven to one.
I think that's good for me.
Which works best for you?
Twelve to two.
I'm good.
It's like we get together after, after before we go through.
Gerald, what time did you decide on?
Twelve o'clock.
You'll be here, right?
Yeah.
All right.
With lunch.
Yes.
Who's ordering?
There's so much leftover pizza last night.
I know. We both ordered for the meeting last night.
All right, move on to item number nine, which is to consider approval of a separation agreement.
So a copy of the agreement is in your packet. And again, I think this is in the city's best interests. I recommend approval. So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Mary Joak. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
And I, I like the letter from Scott, too.
Oh, yeah.
I think that was important to add.
All right, move on to item number 10. Consider approval for outdoor event requests for Staples Area Oktoberfest on October 4th, 2025.
Thanks. Good evening, Ron and City Council members. So I'm Marlo, and I am representing the Chamber of Commerce in town. And we are looking at switching from Pine Grove Park that we normally have our festival on to the Northern Pacific Park downtown, just because it seems like it would accommodate more people, and it would be easier for access for everybody. I'm not sure if you have questions or...
I don't know if I agree with it would accommodate more people.
Oh, I think more people will come downtown versus out in there.
No, that's, that's different than accommodating people.
Oh, sorry. I mean, bringing people to town.
No.
To the event, sorry.
I have to make sure there's not going to be an auction that day.
No, I do understand what you're saying, but yeah.
I think you'll probably get more people because it's farther out. I know some people can't drive or make it.
Right.
They depend on people.
So what were, what was the times on that?
So basically, so people would come up, like, set up and everything at, like, the vendors, and we set up for the chili cook-off. So people usually, we get there as the chamber board around 8:00. And then the festivities start at 11:00 and run until about 9:00 o'clock. Women of Today are going to do a movie in the park that night, starting at 6:00, so that'll run until about 9:00. And then it would be over.
I guess, the only issue I thought in, in, was the, was the time, and it kind of, you know, kind of indicated that that was kind of arbitrary a little bit. And I, I just, in the residential, and I'm, I'm a champion of the residential and people's privacy and people's, and the peace and the, and quiet. And it, I thought 9:00 was a little late. I, um, and you're gonna, there's gonna be alcohol served there.
Yep, we planned on fencing that part off.
Pardon me?
Yeah, we would fence that off in a section.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's still, um, I mean, it, it just seemed like 9:00 in the residential is a little, you know.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So we would stop serving alcohol at the movie, before the movie started. So if the movie started at 6:30, then it would probably go till about 8:30, and then people clear up. But we wanted to stop at 6:00 o'clock, and the alcohol would stop serving.
I mean, you know, I, I'm not opposed to drinking or any of that. I, I don't have issue with that. But the noise, and, you know, people put their kids to bed and that kind of stuff, so I mean, it's.
Sure, so the music in the park.
I realize it's a Saturday.
So the music in the park that goes on Sundays from 7:00 to 9:00, what's the difference in a movie? Just curious.
Yeah, what's the difference on what?
So the music in the park, that would be louder than a movie playing? What's the difference?
Marlo, I don't.
It's more in the middle of the summer, and it's, right? And it's. You know, I mean, it's, in the fall, I mean, people get their, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm not trying to throw wet blanket on it. I like to party and have a good time, and I like, I enjoy activities like that and everything. I, I enjoy a lot. But like I said, I'm, I, I had, I'm, I'm a guy who likes the residential at a certain point, time of the day to be.
Sure.
You know, people get tired of that. And it's surrounded by houses, and I, maybe nobody has a problem with it. But I used to get, I used to have a concert at the park across the street from my house. And, and it's, you know, it was loud.
But you're saying it's going to be the movie, basically.
Yeah, the band would play from 3:00 to 5:00.
Right, band, so that's dinner.
I don't see that on here, Marlo, so I think that's where the confusion was. But, you know, if, if people were going to be drinking, in my opinion, until 9:00, that might get a little, little.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't write that. I didn't know exactly what I was supposed to write out. But yeah, we would stop the drinking at 6:00. So that was our plan, after the band was over, pretty much.
I have no issue with a, with a movie playing till 9:00. If, if it was drinking, I would have an issue with that.
Sure.
So do we need a motion on that, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Blake. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thanks, Marlo.
Good luck.
All right, move on to consider approval of Staples Area Chamber of Commerce temporary liquor license for October 4th, 2025. So moved, just a second. Motion John, second Blake. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to the committee reports, and the first one is the Staples Economic Development Authority.
Good evening, commissioners, or council members, I should say. Just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates on the last CEDA board meeting, as well as a couple of things that have been going on in the community. As some of you may know, Alex Brenney, the new owner of the building across the street, approached the city and the Economic Development Authority about whether or not they'd have any interest, either entity or both, in potentially acquiring that building. I brought that discussion to the EDA board, basically just to get a sense for whether or not there was any interest. The EDA board had a discussion and decided that we would like to go for a walkthrough of the facility. And we were able to do that. In attendance was the mayor, Shane Tappy, the school superintendent, Scott, and myself. And if the mayor wants to jump in and add any thoughts on that, you're certainly welcome to. But the facility is nice. We had some discussion thereafter on whether or not there's any good, meaningful use that the community could put it to, and if there were, whether or not there might be resources that would be available to achieve those ends. As of right now, you know, it's gone no further than that. This is certainly not something that either the EDA or the city need to take action on, but just that we got the right to sort of discuss it and take a look at it before it gets formally put on the market, which is likely to happen in the next weeks or months. So I just wanted to, to appraise you of that. We'll probably be discussing it one more time at the next CEDA meeting. I don't expect that any huge action will be taken between now and then, but just to put it on your radar. Other than that, the CEDA board considered a couple of administrative changes to some of the loans that we approved recently. Nothing super huge on, on that. I wanted to say a huge thank you to Scott and the city employees for putting out the banners and flags on Highway 10. They look very nice. So thanks, thank you for doing that. The garage doors on the industrial park building, the work there is, is now done. So a couple of panels got replaced, so that was good. The public parking, parking lot signs, sort of showing where all the public parking is in downtown, are to be installed by the end of next week. So you'll be seeing some new signage. Should be very, you know, nice and decorative in the communities, we're excited for that. And then I also just wanted to let you all know that the city of Staples, and specifically the Leap Doers Committee that I was asked to be in charge of, was one of just five communities in the region awarded a Thriving Communities Grant from the Initiative Foundation. And in addition to that being an award of, of some funding for various projects, it's also a chance to go to a multi-day seminar put on by the Initiative Foundation to help train community members to help their communities thrive and be empowered. So we were selected for that. I'm very excited about that. And I and Renee Kroll, RMEV's, Marlo Karuna, and I guess Trevor, is he also in? Trevor Hosh will be attending that seminar on August 21st and 22nd. And that's all that I have, unless there are any questions for me.
Any questions for Lucas?
Thank you.
That brings us to Public Works Commission.
I'll add one thing to Lucas's comment about the banners, the ones we did in the median. I'd thank MinDOT for coming to help us out. They brought their cushion trucks, so took a, a task that can be, you know, a little bit nerve-wracking and, and made it quite easy. So we had that done in less than an hour and a half because of their help. Yeah. To the Public Works meeting, I'll just mention the one thing. The MPCA did acknowledge, and then you can see the attached email there, that the sewer service at Farmers Union does not need an extension permit. So I know that was brought up at the last meeting, that there was concerns about that. The MPCA has no concerns. So they are good to go to hook up their sewer service to our sewer system when, when they get to that point. With that, that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions for Scott?
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. That brings us to open forum. And, uh, I am going to take a moment here at the beginning of open forum to make a statement on behalf of myself, the mayor, and our, and the city council, just to open, just to open up open forum. This is the city of Staples response regarding recent public comments and editorial statements. The city of Staples recognizes and respects the right of residents to raise concerns and ask questions about development projects in our community. Public engagement is a vital part of local government. We are committed to transparency, responsiveness, and factual communication. In light of recent comments made public, made during public meetings and in a published editorial, we feel it's important to clarify several points regarding the Farmers Union Foundation meat processing facility project and the city's role in the process. The conditional use permit granted to Farmers Union Foundation is not expired. Based on legal review by the city attorney, it is the city's position that the permit remains valid. The ordinance does not limit progress solely to physical construction. The applicant entered into a signed agreement with his engineers within the 60-day timeframe, which demonstrates that work was actively underway. This documentation has been shared directly with residents who have questioned the COP's status. Concerns about water and air quality raised during open forum have been heard by the city council and referred to the appropriate channels. While council members do not respond during open forum, a standard of practice intended to avoid back-and-forth debates in an open forum, concerns are not ignored. For example, questions regarding wastewater were referred to the Public Works Commission. After review, the commission found no significant concerns about the facility's potential impact on the city's wastewater treatment plant. This finding was reported back to the council in a public hearing. It's also important to understand the scale of the project. Farmers Union Foundation will be limited to processing no more than 15 head of livestock per day. Facility is fully enclosed, including animal delivery, refrigerated offal storage, indoor manure handling, and subject to strict USDA inspection and sanitation standards. The COP also limits the hours of operation, the delivery and finished product pickup. Environmental regulation, including oversight of air and wa- water quality, falls under the jurisdiction of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which will handle, which will handle permitting and compliance. There has been a suggestion that the council has remained silent on public concerns while engaged more openly with the applicant. Council members asked questions to help ensure accurate information was shared publicly, especially in light of misinformation that had been circulating. These questions were not an endorsement or a sign of favoritism. The city has not taken a position on future approvals, if any, and remains committed to a fair, fact-based process in accordance with city code and state law. City staff have responded to public inquiries, shared documentation, and followed up with concerned residents, in some cases, multiple times. While we understand that not everyone will agree with the outcome, it's important to recognize the difference between not receiving information and not receiving the outcome one hoped for. Staff remain committed to transparency and providing accurate information throughout the process. The city of Staples is committed to respectful dialogue, lawful procedure, and supporting responsible development that aligns with the needs of our residents and the values of our community. Anyone else like to speak at open forum?
I'll make this very clear. Jordan, the daughter of Discover Staples, I just want to thank Scott publicly for getting the banners put up on Highway 10. I think they had a huge pop of color for us, and your entire team for doing that. Thank you so much. It's been a long process to get those done, but they're there now, and we hope they're going to be long-term solutions to these little hiccups we have along the way. And of course, to Lucas and facilitating that Blenheim Foundation grant money to get those paid for. Thanks a lot. And Railroad Days is still on, but please pray for nice weather.
One thing I'd like to mention, the Arboretum grand opening is at 5:30 tomorrow evening. Anybody that can make it, please, if you can.
All right. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to city administrators' report.
All right, I have a list. First of all, national night out. I think many of you did make it out to the airport. I'll pass around a thank you from Staples Motley Beyond Poverty. Great turnout, great weather. We had DNR helicopter, the, the Lifelink, is that what it was called, Lifelink? Wasn't able to, to get there because of the threatening weather, but they were going to go to a whole bunch of different spots. But great turnout to show support for law enforcement and our other emergency personnel. How many hot dogs?
Four hundred.
Four hundred hot dogs, so. It was a nice night. Four hundred hot dogs, so, um, it was a nice night, I just want to thank Staples Motley Beyond Poverty, and Women of Today, and Rotary Club, and not sure who else, obviously Fire Department brought their stuff, um, out, and it was a, it was a good night, and good gathering.
It was so fun to see the smiles on people's faces and having them sit and chat, and the kids getting their face painted in the bouncy house, it was a great evening.
So thank, thank you for your work on that.
It was fun.
Good for me, so. Um, other items, uh, I think everybody is aware that our AWAS system is slated to be replaced out at the airport, uh, spent a couple hours out there with the, uh, tech doing kind of a pre-construction site inspection, looking at internet mounting locations for antennas, different things like that, uh, so I think that will, uh, move forward. Dower Lake Storm Shelter, uh, the walls are up, they're planning on pouring cement in the, in, for the floor tomorrow, and the pre-cast panels for the roof will be, uh, here next week, so move it along. Roy, you should go out there, take a look. I don't know if you believe me or not. Uh, Tea Hanger project out at the airport, uh, the, they are essentially done, needs to have some paving, um, and a couple of little pieces of trim, uh, yet to be done, but, uh, for the most part, it's ready to go. Doors are all operational, lights and all the other electrical in, I think the inspectors, electrical inspector comes back for a final, uh, either tomorrow or Thursday, and, uh, so as soon as we can, we'll start filling it up, so, they are really nice hangers, so. Uh, Boiler Room Project, um, basically the lead time on the boiler, once those are in, uh, swimming lessons are now done, uh, so we'll be able to, uh, get, uh, RJ Mechanical in there and let that, uh, project get going. The Locker Room, uh, project over at the community center, uh, is now out for bids, bid opening will be September fourth, on that. Fireworks Friday night, I don't know, did you have somebody out mowing out at the airport? Somebody was out there with a riding mower out on the infield area, mowing, uh, mowing a patch, I was like, I don't know who it was, but probably didn't call in and note him. Uh, and, uh, of course, Railroad Days, uh, this weekend, so, uh, pray for good weather, and come down at eight o'clock on Saturday morning, help set the tent up, right, Jordan? And then lastly, uh, Blue Spruce Properties, um, at the last meeting, we concluded all of the TIF, uh, approvals that were necessary, and on Monday morning, had the closing on the land, so, uh, also did the, the signing on the plat, so that can now be, uh, recorded, and, uh, they're excited, they actually do have a couple of people on the list already, so. They haven't paid, but they're on a list, so. They're, they're excited about the project, and I think it'll, it'll be...
Will they start this fall, or in the spring?
They're, they're planning on spring, yeah, they've got a couple other projects going, and, uh, coincidentally, Hammer's Construction happens to be doing a, a, a big expansion on the Purim meat locker over in downtown Purim right now, so, they're tied up, but anyway, that is what I have, unless anybody has any questions, or let's talk about it in a minute.
Second.
Motion from Roy, second from Mary, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.